Twenty one. The quarter financial results with our very own Stephanie Ebert and Scott Park.
Mr. Park. Thank you.
Would you like me to sling them?
Yeah, yes, please.
I did exactly what I was told to do.
Yeah, that's true.
You'll find, once you get to know me, I'm pretty obedient.
Really? I'm waiting for that time.
That's all Jane told me.
Well. She's the boss of my household.
Really?
I'm not afraid to admit it either.
So I'm going to start off with the third quarter financial results. So I have this lovely report that I prepared that nobody reads. And it's not very useful this year because twenty twenty was such an anomalous year that the comparison of twenty twenty one to twenty twenty really doesn't. Tell you much. So for example, I'm looking at the general fund and at this point last year, we had spent fifty two percent of our general fund budget. This year we're at sixty two percent. Well, that sixty two percent is where we should be. Fifty two percent was abnormal because of COVID and we shut everything down. And so.
And we took, yeah.
So what I've decided to do is instead of going through this detailed report, which I normally do, I'm just going to show you some.
Yeah, I read that other report, just in case you wanted to know.
Appreciate that. There's a, there's a few things I'll point out to you on it, but we'll go through these first. So I just wanted to show you. Mr. Hatch.
All righty.
This illustrious Mr. Hatch has been schmoozing election offices across the state today.
Really?
Not the state, the, the, the nation.
People from Indiana came. State Senator. They wanted to see how we do it.
Elections.
Alright, good.
Yeah. So here's our friend inflation. So. Middle of April, May, I, John Bond and I were both getting a little panicked about inflation.
Be good.
Well, everybody was, right? Both for my personal checkbook and also for.
I still am.
The county. I, I am too. It has moderated a little bit, but it's still increasing. It's just increasing at a decreasing rate. So long-term outlook, I was talking or I had that was in a training with the head economist for Moody's. And they don't anticipate slowdown. They anticipate inflation's going to continue. There's. Yeah, and interest rates are still going to be low. And it was an interesting dichotomy is they have a lot of. So I think I mentioned this to you last week, but there's four trillion dollars of municipal debt outstanding right now. One trillion of that, so a quarter of that is going to come due within the next couple of years. And people need places to put that cash and they want to invest in tax exempt securities and they want to, they can't just leave it in their bank account. So they need protected by, you know, some type of investment. So they continue to anticipating. Long-term bond rates will be low for the next few years, low historically speaking. You know, not, so not at the five percent range, but at two percent, two, three percent range.
So what are they forecasting for rates next year?
So they're, they're for municipal, so government debt.
Government debt, yeah.
They're, they're still down low on the lower end of the ten-year. So they don't tell me exactly what they think, but they're, they're on the low end of the ten years.
Ten-year bond?
Yeah.
So. How does that affect everyday interest rates that we pay?
So it means your mortgage rates, if they're variable, they're going to stay low. It means your fixed mortgage rates, you'll still be able to get a thirty-year fixed rate at a lower cheaper rate. But what it also means is.
For another year or so.
For another year or so. He said, long-term risk is that you have money that's too cheap and too available. And that's going to create a stagflation scenario like we had back in.
What stagflation means?
So you have high inflation and no growth. So usually when you have.
Remember that guy named Jimmy Carter?
Yeah, you remember that?
Remember when gas, yeah, the people lined up, there was no gas. No, you were, you were probably in grade school. You didn't worry about stuff like that.
But that's happening right now. You're starting to see some of that take place.
I remember Billy Beer. Wasn't that his brother?
Yeah. So, so normally what happens in inflation, the economy is so hot, you can't get workers, you can't get enough, you know, and that we're experiencing that. You know, but anybody who wants a job can go out and get a job. But then the stagflation is you have layoffs. And you have a higher unemployment, but yet still high inflation. And that Jimmy Carter was a little before my time. So I, you know, I've read about stagflation in that, you know, my college classes, but so that's just one of the risks.
That was in the seventies, Jimmy Carter, seventy-eight, wasn't it?
No. Before that, wasn't it?
No, it was about mid-seventies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just know you never buy a house in those years. From about seventy-two to seventy-eight, seventy-nine.
Twenty-five percent interest.
I sold a lot of homes through that time.
I'm sure you sold a lot, but you don't buy a house. If you have a choice, don't buy a house that was built during that time because they're cheap to construct because.
Construction, yeah.
Yeah, horrible construction.
So I just wanted to show you.
These two-by-sixes will work for floor choices. Go ahead and span it twenty feet.
Two-by-six, huh? So gas prices, they're forty-nine percent since the start of the year.
Yeah.
In Utah. So, or this is average across.
Go by.
So inflation still remains a risk because all I'm trying to show you with these slides is inflation is still higher on the list of things.
I'd like to be able to buy gas for three forty-seven, six.
So this is.
We're starting to see construction material. Level out. Now, I don't want to say it's coming down, but we're starting to still level out.
You mean your cost or the people's supply?
Oh, plus, I told you we were putting on allocation on water heaters a while back. Well, I was over there Friday. And the allocation still exists, but they're pretty much giving you everything you want. They've caught up. So it's not really there. And availability is coming back. Still, still will start to be available again. And so things are starting to become normalized a little bit in the construction industry.
Well, it is in the housing too. So for the first week that we've. Seen it, we haven't seen multiple offers and people bidding above list price.
Really?
Homes on basically East Ban. The other factor, there's homes up. We've had several homes up there now. I shouldn't say several, two or three that have been on the market over five days. Wow, that's never happened. Yeah, I mean, it sounds ridiculous, but.
No.
That's how crazy it was.
Okay.
Went back to good to know, Gage.
Yeah, there's, I think, going along, I think we're starting to see just a little.
Now, I'm not worried about a big depression here.
No.
Because demand's still pretty high.
Soft landing.
Right, but it's okay to be, like you say, soft landing. The sea's starting to wriggle, caught up and. In my mind. This is supply and demand starting to equalize.
Other than housing, you still have an imbalance in supply and demand in housing.
Yeah, you still have that. But you know, the imbalance is truly on the competitive side. You know, cheaper houses. And, and with the price weighted, I don't know what you're going to do there, Gage.
Yeah, well, nobody, why would you put a, go out and build a home? You know, for three hundred thousand when you can put one for six hundred thousand and make twice the money.
Yeah. And sell it like that.
And sell it just as quick.
So I just got a call from Rich Hare before we walked in here. And he's trying to put an affordable housing group together for the Wakehog. I said, well, Rich, we've got that housing panel all the way, Cog.
You already got it.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he says, we need to sit and talk the detail. I said, hey, hey, make your best shot at it. We're all for you. I'll help you. I'll be involved with you. He said, well, we just need to talk about this. I said, well, we're great with that. Let's talk about it.
Talk.
I said, we won't fight that.
No.
Sales tax. This is the county sales tax growth. Now, you remember twenty twenty, I came back to him, I said, I have no idea what COVID is going to do. It's April of twenty twenty and I said. To be safe, we're going to lower our forecast by ten percent. And then we had the best year ever. We had a nine percent growth, right? It was still the right decision because I mean, it was a shot in the dark and we took the conservative route.
Of course it is. And you're, that's why you're.
I'm not normally wrong in my sales forecast by that much, but I'm okay with twenty twenty.
How do you forecast that? It looks like a bunch of mountains. Yeah. I mean, you know, your points won't take it. Scott, that's a pretty tough forecast.
Yep.
And even though you had one below your forecast, you don't.
If you look at it, it almost looks like a thing of Weber County.
Yeah.
It almost does, yeah. Yeah. Why did we see the decrease in September?
In March or in September?
Over here, August or September.
You know, so I don't get into, so we could drill into the individual filers and see why. I don't have a good answer for you. The state is, we're in a two-month delay. So what we received in September was from July.
So that was.
And I, I don't know the answer to that.
Could it be, could it be school?
Oh, so that's really July.
We're two months late, so that happened in July.
Oh, that very well could be just the summer block, you know, before they get ready to go to school.
Yeah, so if we're taking that back, the January was low and it climbed out of January, really, with action.
Well, let's, let's back up. So. Is this graph? Two months behind or just a week?
Yeah. So what I'm telling, so in twenty twenty, we had nine percent sales tax growth. We thought we were going to lose ten percent. We had nine percent growth, best year ever. Now, when you compare twenty twenty, which is now the red line at a hundred percent to twenty twenty-one. So these aren't terms of.
Best year, Gage.
So this is, yeah, these aren't actual dollars. These are percentages. So we're up nineteen percent.
Over our best year ever.
Over our best year ever.
Hold on for a minute. I think I feel a tear well in my left eye.
Well, and. Now, remember, there's two things. One, the economy in Weber County is doing good. But two, it's inflation, right? So when you have eleven percent inflation, our sales tax goes up eleven percent.
Right.
Has nothing to do with the economy doing, you know what I mean? So we're ahead of the inflation, so we are still having real.
Crack open a Mountain Dew over that. He's good right now.
That chart kind of looks like the Mountain Dew plot, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Okay, so, but we're doing, sales tax is doing well, which is also why the municipal services fund is doing well because that's such a sales tax improvement fund.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Compass Mineral, holy magnum.
So this is, now this is, I changed this chart. This is compared, twenty twenty was such a weird year that I said, okay, let's look and see what it was in twenty nineteen. So this is twenty twenty-one year to date compared to twenty nineteen. So there's a year.
We still haven't seen September's numbers. That's all, that's really August. So TCG is not reflected there.
Yeah, September, yeah, those numbers would be reported at the end of September. Actually, they'd be reported in October, right? Because TCG is at the end of September?
TCG is the end of September.
Okay, so they'll, yeah, they'll, then you have thirty days to file the report. And then the state takes another thirty days to pay us.
That's going to kill that. They didn't have it last year, so that's going to kill it.
Yeah. So we're doing well in the tourism tax revenue. It's coming back strong as well. You can see that we're over seventeen and twenty-one percent over twenty-nineteens values.
I see.
So it's doing good. Yeah, I don't normally like to skip a year like that, but twenty, it was too high of a change compared to twenty twenty, but that was because twenty twenty was such a crazy year.
Okay.
Okay, so this is just kind of.
Go back a second for that. So the part I find interesting here is restaurant. You remember how we had all these restaurants go broke and had financial problems and, well. Between this part of the year and the back part of the, well, this is twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Anyway, although these are twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, anyway. My point being though, restaurants really adapted. And restaurants who didn't adapt went broke and left. And restaurants who did adapt, who started to do more pickup and will call and stuff like that, they actually have done decent in this.
I spent more money on restaurants in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one than I did probably the previous four years combined.
Well, you're not alone there. A lot of people have because the wives have had to work more. It's not as been as easy to run the home. It's not been as easy to. Do a lot of things that normally you do in your house, in your home.
Well, I was saying, the reason why we're doing it is it's so darn convenient now. I just pull up my phone and say, I don't want to, I don't want to cook anything. I'm just going to push these three buttons and all of a sudden food's going to be delivered to my door in a few minutes.
Yeah.
Whereas before I'd have to go get it or, you know what I mean? Yeah, it's just very convenient.
I was telling you guys, I went, Saturday night, I went to Augen Pizzeria, pick up pizzas. And I pulled in there, the guy comes right out, says, what's your name? And I told him, he's okay. Well, the place was full and I thought, boy, this time of the day, it was four o'clock. I thought, they're slammed. Well, the more I got looking at everybody there, they're all there picking pickups like me. Almost nobody was inside the restaurant and I didn't realize it until I got looking around and they were just slammed.
Which restaurant was that?
Augen Pizzeria.
Pizzeria.
Yeah.
Changed their whole system.
You know, while you're, while you're on that, you're right, Steph. While you're on that, they just put a Cafe Rio in front of the Albertson's out by me. You know, that Albertson's, it used to be, it started as a taco time. Oh, yeah. You ever tried me to build that? You build it across from the McDonald's.
Yeah.
You know, by, anyway. So we went in there Friday night, they just got open. They don't have a sales counter. They don't have a place to go in and order. You have two screens you can go in and order. And then they have stainless steel rack about that high, starts about here, shelf, 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 shelf.
Really?
Yeah, and you just pick your, you see, you look for your name and you pick it up and go. You get it, you order it and they put it on the shelf under a little heat thing. They don't have a place for you to.
They're okay.
Yeah. And they have a drive-up window. That was big for them. And that, there's no way in though. There was a couple of tables. It's all, it's all been redesigned for.
Isn't that amazing?
Yeah, I would have thought.
Yeah, it was good.
So that speaks to your point. Those who have adapted.
Have been very successful. And they're making money because like Scott said, he's eating that more.
Yeah.
Because it's been so convenient.
It is. They have nothing to do with those places.
They don't. Most of them are Coke products. I don't know how to fix that. Pepsi's not as widely distributed. Our reason is Pepsi though. Mountain Dew.
That looks good.
Yeah, yeah, we're doing well. So I want to just kind of show you the revenues and you kind of see the last three-year comparison. So general fund, this twenty twenty was, was higher than normal because of the CARES Act. So.
You gotta add that in, but that's not, okay.
Yeah, so this is just revenues on the general fund side, but you know, and for the ARPA funds, we actually created a brand-new fund because it's been a couple of years. So we don't want to mess up our general fund comparability for the next decade.
Good idea. Yeah, that would throw it off the charts.
Yeah, and so you look at, but our revenues are fine. They're right where they should be. Culture Parks and Rec, you can see the big dip right here. There's no TCG there.
Boy, yeah, the golden spike, that would have been half that again.
Yeah.
So they did really good.
Yeah, we're about comparable to where we were in twenty nineteen.
OECD killed us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the municipal services fund is up a little bit and that's because of the increased sales tax revenue.
I like that.
That's great, yeah. So when you look at culture park recreation. Like I say, TCG is part of that, but our, our. Attendance or our people who've come to our parks is up way up. And I had thought we'd have seen a little more of that.
Well, the low year is twenty nineteen, twenty twenty's the middle year.
This is twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-one. Those revenues are so small compared to the, how big the revenues are with OECD and the Paris Egyptian Theater. You know.
That brought it down.
Yeah, that's what, that, and they didn't do anything in twenty twenty. They laid off all their staffs, all they did.
Twenty twenty-one, didn't they go through four months before they really got picked up?
Yep. And now you can't find people to work. They're working their, they're just going crazy.
Yeah.
Lot of overtime.
Here's our expenditures. So salaries and wages is down a little bit. That's mostly due to the early retirement buyout and then hiring people at lower work and also not being able to fill positions. So it's not just because we're, we did a good thing, buying people out, but also we have positions that we can't hire for, or we're having a hard time hiring for.
Well, if we had known that COVID was going to hit this way and this is what it's going to have, we wouldn't have done that early buyout. But nobody knew that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I said.
Your crystal ball just was a little foggy that day.
I know. I need to change it to get a.
Get that crystal ball going.
Hey, get some wind acts for him. That's just life.
And, and, you know, I'm fine with that, you know?
Yeah, and you can argue there wasn't a bust. Wasn't like it, it costs us a lot of money because it didn't, I mean. We can't find people now, so we probably would have preferred to keep them around as it turns out, but that's okay. It happened.
Yeah, and I mean, it is a financial savings to the county.
Right.
And when we hired people back, we're still hiring them at a lower salary than we were paying the person who left, so.
Even we've given them their increase.
Yeah.
So are we at sixty, what's the sixty percent mean?
So sixty percent of our budget expenditure.
So that's six percent of our budget.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
That's going to make it look real good this year, Gage.
That's going to be good, yeah.
It's not necessarily what you want, but it's going to make you look good.
Well. Yeah, we have that nine million dollars of projected savings this year. So twenty twenty, okay, so travel and training. You can see in twenty nineteen, that was a normal year. We still haven't quite recovered. Conferences still aren't back. We're still underspending our travel and training budget.
Yeah, none of us went to Naco or we didn't go to. Well, yeah, but the way it looks right now.
I didn't go one place.
I'm not sure you're going to be able to get on the plane if you, if you buy the ticket. You see now, American Airlines, they, they canceled fifteen hundred flights in the last three or four days.
Yeah.
And Southwest just went through it two, three weeks ago.
Yep.
Man, what a mess it is right now.
Yep.
And I think that there's a lot of conferences, same with the restaurants. These, these in companies and, and entities that are putting on conferences. They're continuing to do them virtual. And so you don't have to travel if you don't want to.
Yeah. Why would you go to Salt Lake if you could do a Zoom meeting here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did my bond conference. When we traveled to Chicago, I watched it from my office, right?
Yeah.
So save all, I mean, I was the registration.
That has changed our environment a little bit. Yeah, hard, yeah. Well, about thirty percent, about thirty percent of the TCG guys did it virtually.
They were so unsure about traveling right now, but if you can do Zoom, they say, great, I'll just stay home and Zoom it.
You don't have to pay airfare, you don't have to pay lodging.
You have to go take your shoes off.
It's not even just the pay.
Exactly.
It's the fact that they seem to be a little unsure, you know, I mean, their flights are getting canceled. They're not sure what will be on the other end when they get there. I don't know.
Yep. So we're still under where we were, which, you know, travel and training is not a huge percentage of our budget, but you know, we're still saving their equipment and debt. I don't have a good answer as to why we're not spending on some of our projects. Some of these are just projects we budgeted for and. Either, I don't know if it's a supply chain issue, but like we budgeted for the elevator to be fixed. And we just haven't made much progress on that. I don't know if we were waiting for decisions on what we were doing with the building or what, but.
Could be, it could get materialized.
It, it could be that. So there's a lot of different projects.
It could be ordered. It just can't get.
Yeah. There wasn't any one reason I could see that, that explained a lot of that. But we know what they all are. I mean, I have every budget item and, as to, you know, and so.
Right.
Yeah, and then current expense were a little bit higher than we were in twenty nineteen, but that, I mean, this dip, that was the twenty twenty, everything was shut down. So I'm not worried about that at all. We're. Seventy-five percent of the way through the year. So this is, this is about right where we'd want it to be. You have any questions on that?
No, that looks good.
Okay.
Well, on the expense side, we actually budgeted a little higher.
We do.
In twenty twenty-one because we had some savings that were rolled into it. So, yeah, that's okay.
So I want to switch gears then, and I want to come over here to budget adjustment. So we have a public hearing tomorrow and you're going to see this. Now, you've seen all of these before. But I just want to go over them with you before we're in the meeting tomorrow in the public hearing, just to remind you of what they all are.
Tomorrow's a public hearing?
Just for the twenty twenty-one operating budgets, so not the twenty twenty-two tentative. Just adjusting this.
The changes we've made.
Yeah, changes you've already made that we do once a quarter. This is our annually, we do this once a quarter every time.
So I kind of thought on the health department, we decided to cut them back a little. Don't you remember?
Yeah, they asked for one point five million.
They did.
Yeah.
Well, when we questioned them, because Melissa figured she could do it for six hundred and anyway, they're a lot more. That's just the price of materials, what's happened, blah, blah, blah.
Well, their bid came in, it was what, seven hun, almost eight hundred thousand dollars. And they wanted a contingency for it. And they had put in a, like a huge contingency.
Almost double, they had. And that's exactly what I remember.
Yeah, and so we left it down at a million. They subbed.
So that still gives them a couple of hundred.
Yeah, in case something happens.
Yeah. Which is plenty.
Yeah, that, yeah, it is plenty.
The ninety-three fifty Western.
So if I made a motion to make that nine hundred thousand, would you two support it?
Health Department? I'd be okay with that.
Think about that. Keep going, Scott.
So, sorry, that was the health department. So if we go back up to ninety-three hundred West, that's the GSL road. We paid a million dollars out of that, out of the RDA balance. And then this was just.
I remember that.
A portion of that.
Remember we run over a little on that?
Yeah. Is that road done now?
Yeah. A road is done.
I'm going to be out there this afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks really nice. When you make that turn, pay attention to the concrete in the middle of the road, Gage.
Okay.
But you'll see where it is right there.
Uh, the Western Weaver Water Study, this is the expansion. We were doing the Upper Valley Study. We decided to have them do the Lower Valley one as well. Winston Park Sewer Improvement, that's where we're paying them to dig the, the pipe down a little bit deeper than.
Oh, that's where we're going to put it down and we're going to recover that.
We're going to recover it over impact fees over the next.
That's going for something to fifteen feet, seven to fifteen feet or something.
Oh, it might be down to twenty?
I don't remember the depth.
It's substantial.
Past eighteen.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's good. I get it.
Sheriff's Warehouse, we talked about that. This was.
Oh, Scott?
Yeah.
On that Winston Park, is this going to make that fund sustainable more? I mean, we're taking money out of it. The goal is to have some, to base this. Some sustainability to that fund, that impact fee fund, so that we don't have to keep. Babying along as planting it, you know what I mean?
Well, this, this actually hurt that because it took a huge amount out that we're not going to get paid back for years and years.
My, my goal here, and I understand that in five or six years, we have to spend this. So you can't have a monstrous fund, but you can certainly have a bigger fund than we've had because there's always plenty to do in there. And I, I would like to. En- enlarge the size of that fund fifty, sixty, seventy percent.
As long as we can spend it. Our biggest issue with that is we haven't been spending the money as fast as we need to. So we're coming usually up to five years and we still haven't spent the money. So we've struggled with spending it on time.
Well, we've got multiple lift stations coming up and we've got a bridge that we're looking at that. Out West Weaver that might end up falling in something like this. And then we've got gauges rolled up in the Upper Valley that we were considering impact fees to pay.
Yeah.
Well, I thought we were going to use Prop One funds on that.
Which one are we talking about?
The forty-two-hundred North going up into Wolf Creek.
Well, don't you remember John Lewis coming in here and said, we'll pay impact fees on those. Well, we figured if we made a little area in there and put those in, we can charge everybody in that area an impact fee.
Oh, absolutely. All the landlords need to contribute to that, but I thought, didn't we say that was a Prop One project?
I kind of didn't think it was.
I, I'll have to go back and look.
And I don't think you can do both.
Again, sorry. It's the one that for John Lewis going up to Wolf Creek.
Absolutely. We did say it was a Prop One.
Yeah, I thought.
I remember that because.
Can you use both?
Yeah.
Can you do both in there though? Can you use Prop One dollars and have impact fees on?
I don't know why you can't.
I don't know either.
So I remember it was a Prop One. We did say it was a Prop One because it had.
Well, if you could do that.
So the.
That would help funnel Prop One dollars into this.
Is this the road that eventually goes to the North Ogden Divide?
Yeah, yeah.
It is. It comes from, so that's.
Comes out of. And they would eventually turn into impact fees because as they're paid back.
I hope you love it.
Where that Scott today, today. Now, whether it's, whether it's an impact fee or whether we just do basically a. Reservation that says, look, we're not, you want to come in with thirty lots, we're going to charge you, you know.
An impact fee.
An impact fee, but it may be parked tight in with a subdivision rather than per home.
Yeah.
We probably want to collect it on the front side is what I'm saying.
Yep.
When the, when the plats recorded, rather than when the home's built.
Yep.
So if we put Prop One dollars into this gauge, it would help took those Prop One dollars back into impact fees as they're paid in.
Yeah.
So it helps us kind of convert them over a little.
We, we should probably bring that up again.
Ah, see what I mean?
So you're saying you want to borrow money from the Prop One fund?
No, no, no.
Oh.
We want to use Prop One dollars on the road, and when the impact fees come in to pay on the road, we'll turn those back into, we'll collect them and put them back into our impact fee.
Yeah, you can do that, but then you gotta stop spending within five years.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah.
We're okay if you spend within five years. There's enough need out there that if we're getting close, we can start spending.
Okay, that's fine.
We just need to pay attention to it. That's what they have done in the past, Scott.
We need to have that discussion on funding that road, getting it started. And then, we talked about that today?
Well, he is. He's going to the Transportation Committee on.
Oh, yeah.
That's today and you're, and that's an important meeting because it's where they assign the.
Okay, I'm not sure that's even on there.
Well, you gotta get it on that list.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can. It's too late now.
I'd like to get that on the list.
We'll do what we can do here.
But anyway, then we should have a discussion how we can actually go back and get some of that money back.
Right.
With that.
Yeah, WACOG's funding right now for twenty twenty-three, right? The twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah, we're out there twenty twenty-three.
Do we have any projects on there?
Mm-hmm, we have several.
Yeah, okay.
So Sean, he's kind of the one that drives that, right?
Sean Brook.
Huh?
Yeah, Brook drives.
Yeah, but Sean, Brook is the one that takes care of it and keeps track of it, but Sean's the one that makes applications.
Yeah, good. Well, we can get an application for that to.
They're all in, are, they're all in.
Application's have to be in by June, right? That, at least the notice that you're gonna file.
We've reviewed them all and, uh, we're actually making the decisions.
Right, you're ranking them.
So we, we can apply for next year.
List what they are?
I'd like to see them.
I can get that. You know, the other thing we should do, if we get that funded, we gotta put in through the WFRC for some active transportation dollars. That'd be a great spot to have that active transport boat, you know, for walking path. Let's get that done now. So we don't have to use rent funds.
That's good.
Let's use, let's use WFRC.
Listen, you've wanted that for three years, that connectivity. The first budget hearing we sat in, we talked about forty-one hundred.
Well, it'd be nice to take a lot of that traffic that hits one street. And you've got too many dying people living up there now.
Yeah.
All these people from California, in case you haven't noticed.
Well, that's the realers have been quite successful up there.
If you don't believe, just ask Miranda.
I know.
Well, I don't want to take too much of your time. I only have twelve-thirty scheduled, but I'll just take these last ones. Um, Sheriff's Warehouse, seven hundred thousand. Property Management's Pull Barn, two hundred thousand, Weaver Center Improvements, that was the number we'd plugged in originally for, um, remodeling for the public defenders.
Right.
So what?
Now this, we knew.
Yep.
This one, weren't we gonna recoup some of their budget that they, uh, uh?
They turned, they turned in so much that they, yeah, that we were fine.
Yeah, but that's ongoing expense too, because we were paying rent.
Yeah, that's, well, okay.
But they had enough, they had enough one-time savings last year that even though we're budgeting seven hundred one thousand, we added more than that to our fund balance.
From them.
Yeah. So this employee compensation, this is the effect of the two dollars an hour, plus a couple of other miscellaneous market adjustments for fifteen thousand dollars. Um, various grants that came in that basically paid for themselves, plus a little. And then, um, Jennifer, she had underestimated the concessions revenue and also the cost of expenses related to that. So she's asked to spend a little bit more money on there. That's already been approved.
So keep in mind, she underestimated the concessions revenue. So we did see those figures back several slides ago when you talked about even the dip in the culture parks and recreation revenues. They did very well. We're one of the only shows in town with that golden spike being open last year, twenty-one.
That's good.
Yeah, they did really well.
So Jennifer reached out to me on Friday, which I'd already submitted all this stuff, um, so I didn't want to change this, um, but she asked for, she said, are concessions revenue are still exceeding projections? So, and I checked, they're up another ninety-five thousand dollars. So she's asking to increase her revenue and expense budget. Ninety-five thousand increase in revenue, sixty-six thousand dollars increase in cost of sales, to be able to continue to fund it for the rest of the year.
That's thirty thousand is a good. I'm good with that. Are you good with that?
You pause it, yeah.
So I printed a budget change form. If I could get two of you to sign it, I would have, I'll get.
That's good. Okay, so Harv, you wanted to know?
Yeah, I do. Let me sign this really quick. Where do you want me to sign?
Just anywhere on the bottom. So this is an electronic system that we're using and in the past, I don't know if you've been getting these emails or not, but we want to try again to get you guys to be able to approve them electronically. So I don't have to print the papers and bring them here for you to sign them.
That's it. Says forty-one hundred north.
Okay, thank you. Well, depending on where you go in, but. So, what is it? Oh, it's ranked number nine?
Well, that was my ranking of them. Well, I tried to be fair.
Well, hey, look at what's there, yeah.
Yeah.
Look at what's first. Plain City. Hell, I'm gonna make a little correction to this right now.
Wait.
Nine, one, hold on.
No wonder we haven't got that big notice. Everything's going to Plain City. Holy head.
Oh, this is good.
Talk about feathering your own road out there.
So two, the other one that's on there is High Fros, twenty-five fifty, and that's from thirty-five hundred to forty-seven.
That's, I like that.
Yeah. So those are the two roads that you put on there.
Yeah, you got that number two.
Don't we give enough money to Plain City out there with being a bedroom community with the number of people?
Let's talk about that. Plain City's a little one. It's comparative of all that.
There's no dollar amount on there.
Right. When you go through here and you look at them, I rank them the same. Plain City, Weaver County, twenty-five fifty, and West Haven, all three of those ones.
Yeah, okay.
And those, those will all get funded.
Anything you can do to help forty-one hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know that. Let's see if we can't push that.
That's all I have, commissioners, unless you have any questions?
Thank you for showing us that, Commissioner.
Scott, you've done good this year. This was a good.
Very good.
And Ricky, Steph, all of you have done very, very good.
You could gently lay that over here.
All right, commissioners, you're, you're going through this commission meeting tomorrow.
So I'll go over the budget changes and commission meeting tomorrow, yes.
Just what you just showed us.
Just what you, yeah, so this isn't a surprise.
Yeah, and then the twenty twenty-two tentative budget, I'll also talk just briefly about that. I'm not going to show any slides. I'm basically gonna say, come to the public hearing if you want to know a lot more about it.
Perfect. Happy day.
Okay. Thank you for.
Thank you all.
Election Day tomorrow.
Oh, election day tomorrow.
Yep. Pronounced a little slower than normal, but we don't have a lot of time. A lot of mayoral races are not contested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Huntsville's kind of hot.
Is it?
Yeah.
For the mayor?
Well, West Haven's will hot.
That surprises me, uh. What about? Sorensen doesn't want to have any signs up.
Yeah, I was up there yesterday putting out ballot boxes.
But West Haven, you think, you think they're gonna get beat?
Well, I, I don't know. I haven't really been following it. I just know that.
I do know.
Those are, those are the two kind of hotter races.
Yeah, well, there's, what's his name up there? There's a little bit, uh, yeah, he, he had to put a sign, Allen. Oh, that's Doug Allen.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we'll get it done.
Thanks, everybody. Only one else there that can do it is you.
Sorensen's a good guy.
Right.
Sorensen will do good.
Right. Well, let's move on. Charlie Ewart, Rick Grover, Sean Wilkinson.
I hate to say true, though, though.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, true's been good, but you know.
He's been really good.
He's tired.
Oh, yeah.
He's put a lot of time in.
Hasn't he done twelve years?
I think so.
Yeah, that's long, that's long enough. Hey.
Commissioner?
Charlie, how you doing?
Commissioner?
Good morning.
Oh, geez.
I had to have some backup this time.
Yeah, I see that. You had a little money when you left the other night.
Oh, man.
All right, commissioners, let's move ahead. Charlie, we're gonna turn the time over to you. JDC Ranch Rezone.
Thanks.
Ah, goodness.
Uh, we've got the applicant here with us. I just wanted to lay out the two different maps in front of you. And, um, Brian, if you guys have anything else you wanted to, uh, address, um, uh, we can go to there. Uh, so the two different maps you have in front of you, the one with the blue is the map that, uh, Brian sent over to me, um, shortly after reviewing the one with all the yellow. So the one with all the yellow is the map that I put together, um, that, uh, is intended to create seven hundred and twenty-five dwelling units. Um, as Brian and I looked at that, um, well, the primary reason why I did the yellow where it's located is because I, I built a four hundred foot buffer from the property boundaries around the R three zone. So trying to keep as much of that higher density R three stuff on the inside. When Brian looked at it.
Or closest to that main road company.
Yeah, closest to the main road, close to the park. Um, also, if it's on the inside, any of the surrounding uses, um, they're only gonna see land uses that are very similar to what theirs are already in the R one twelve zone. As Brian looked at that, he said, well, we own the property to, we own a good portion of the property to the north, and we own a portion of the property to the south as well. And so if u- u- using the same principles, it, it, uh, doesn't make sense to not allow that R three zone to go all the way down to the southern border, um, near the commercial area, and then up to the northern border where you see the R two zone on the, uh, the blue, the map with the blue on it. So either way, um, we recommended to the planning commission, the planning commission, uh, recommended to you guys to go with this one here, but I don't think it's because they didn't like this. I just think they kind of went with what was in the staff report as it was, not fully, um, anticipating by the time they made the motion that the applicant was actually requesting this one and not this one. The point is, uh, overall, uh, the development agreement is going to be limited to seven hundred and twenty-five dwelling units max. Um, there was a request as well, so uh, one thing that was in the staff report that the planning commission forwarded as a recommendation to you guys is no more than one hundred, um, multifamily units, uh, in total. And, uh, Brian and I got discussing that, um, his request of the planning commission was no more than one hundred townhomes.
Yeah.
Attached townhomes.
No, no, yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's right.
Right, uh, but the fourplexes that they have in there, um, let's see if I have that. But the fourplexes, they don't want to include as part of that one hundred. And so we just wanted to chat with you guys about that before we even went to.
How many fourplex units?
We would propose, Commissioner, um, and I'll pull up the images so that it's this, it's the product that's being built is, um, west.
There you go.
Of the barn. So it's these fourplex units. You've kind of got two up front. It feels like architecturally, it feels like, and I'll just show you a quick exhibit of that as well, so that you get a feel. Make sure we're all on the same page. So, sorry, Commissioner Jenkins, I don't have one big enough for everybody, but, um, it looks, it looks, these, this is the product.
Okay.
So it doesn't look and feel like this massive, um, home or a fourplex. Um, it's just four units. There's two up front. There's two front doors on the front, and then there's, there's two doors on the side of these units where you've got a driveway off of the main road that comes in. And the garages for both of those units are right there. So the garages are hidden, um, they're tucked back behind. Um, and we've just had a lot of success on these, on these types of.
Like a Richmond America type deal.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, did Beasley give you the okay on this?
Um, our discussion with John was we were, we were hoping, our hope and what John would say, I think, might be a little, little different. I was hoping to have a hundred attached townhomes like Charlie mentioned, and then a hundred attached patios. And one of the reasons why we feel strongly about the attached patios is we've got a lot of amenities. This is a highly amenitized community, and a good part of these amenities really come from, um, probably, um, independent of the rest of the development, we would put a pretty significant amenity package here where a lot of the attached patio homes would be located right next to it. And so that hundred unit number was a unit that was big enough, Commissioner Jenkins, if you remember, to justify clubhouse and pool and some of those more extensive amenities that those residents like for their grandkids and themselves when they come over. So, um, that would be our intent, is that we go with a hundred townhomes and a hundred attached patios is what we're hoping, um, for. And in terms of what we spoke with John about, that's kind of what I said, is John, look, this is what we would like to ask for a permission from the, from the county for.
Yeah, but when I left, you two were shaking hands and happy and smiled at each other, and I thought you'd actually come up with some numbers.
The, the number that I told John was we're gonna go in and ask for two hundred attached.
Okay.
One hundred towns, one hundred attached patios.
Okay. Out the door, if you were to, uh, package those multifamilies in the areas that are R two and R three on the, on this map here, um, the areas that aren't R two and R three, I mean, the more you put in this area, the bigger the lot sizes tend to be in those areas. So even if we were to say R one ten up in this corner, if they were to pack in two hundred in here, they may end up with even bigger lot sizes than R one ten over there, just because they're limited to seven hundred and twenty-five total.
Well, we talked about that, uh, with John, you and Brian, you and me and him, about the fact that, uh, depending on what happened here, he might actually have a little bit of trouble using up all this property. And so I do remember that.
No, I, I mean, I think, uh, Charlie's exactly right. I mean, to the extent that we can, you know, get the critical mass that we need in there for the, for around the park. We've got some commercial uses there and I would love to see, you know, again, the higher density will justify commercial uses better. So our hope would be that we would have an ice cream shop in there, a soda shop, whatever it might be. And the more dense we can put those homes around the park with all of those amenities, the better off that community and the commercial potential will have for us will be. And so that's our hope. And then, and then we can spread that density out as we move, we, as we move out west and as we move, um, kind of east on the property, we have, we have roughly six thousand square foot homes on the R two zone directly north of that R two zone, the blue zone that you see there. That's a, that's a community that we have right now that's currently under construction called West Park. And we have anywhere from eight to, I think, eleven thousand square foot homes in West Park. And so the zoning that we have there on the R two lots, yeah, that's my net lots. So the zoning that we have there would be consistent with that West Park zoning that we, that we're currently building. So we would look at that almost as an extension of JDC Ranch to the south. And so we'd like to, we'd like to continue that a little higher density there, different than Charlie's map of R one twelve. And next to that busy road, the busy north-south road, we would hope to get something similar.
So you want to stick with this one?
No, I would like to stick with this one, yep.
But the planning commission bought out on this, not this.
Yeah. And again, I don't know if it was because they were specifically saying we don't like this, or if it was more like, this is what staff recommended, we're just gonna go with it. Um, it was after, boy, we had a pretty good public hearing. I mean, it was good an hour, maybe even hour and a half of discussing it. This was presented at the beginning of the hour and a half, and I think this was just in front of their face. I, I don't know for sure that they were married to one or the other.
Are you convinced? Because I was just gonna ask, I'm, I wasn't convinced when we walked away that, walked away from that, meaning that this wasn't the one that was actually approved.
Right.
I tried to make that. We can go back and look at it and listen to that.
Well, I had multiple people complain to me. The one was all said and done, they didn't know which one was approved either. So you're not alone there, Brian. Lots of people said that.
Yeah.
I, so I like to know which one the planning commission thought they approved.
So it was, it was this one. I, I, I remember what the motion was. It was exactly what the staff report said. And again, the staff report was written before this map was even produced.
Okay. Because there's a significant difference between these two.
There's.
Well, so when is this gonna be in front of us?
When you guys are ready for it. And so I'm thinking we can go as early as, uh, if you want to notice it for a public hearing, we'll have to do two weeks from tomorrow. If you're, if you don't care about the public hearing, you think what happened to the planning commission was good enough, we could do a week from tomorrow.
We, oh, can I, is it okay if I chime in? I, we, I think, um, we've got a development agreement to negotiate and a couple other big hurdles to clear. One of the things that you'll remember, I spent a lot of time talking to John about when we met earlier this week, was to say, we want certainty. You don't have these zones, these zones don't exist in Plain City. And so if, if it really is a fact of us getting all these zones for that matter, none of these zones exist in Plain City right now.
Right.
And so if it is the case that we are to be annexed into Plain City, we would like to have a tremendous amount of certainty. We would like to know what we're getting, know what they're getting. We want everybody to be clear.
And placing wants that same certainty, Gage.
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
And so Charlie, we, we'd kind of like to not hit pause. We, we want to continue to make great progress with staff, but we want to push a development agreement along that we feel like gives us the certainty that we need. And then we'll sit down and, and present that or talk to that about, um, Plain City certainly, but ultimately that's what we're hoping to get in front of you as a kind of complete package. So we do the rezone to, to whichever map is, is here. We would do, um, the general plan revision, general plan amendment, and then we would also have a development agreement that we could do all as kind of one complete package. That's, that's our.
Just so you guys know, we met there, I met the other night with Plain City, with the mayor and two city councilmen, two planners, the hardest ones.
Right.
To make sure they buy off on this, and they bought off on this plan that Brian's talking about right now, seven twenty-five. And, uh, so they said that they could live with it. So then we come back in here and they authorized the mayor to come in here and sit with Brian and negotiate the terms of this, how many and how we'll do it. Well, in concept, they agree with this now too.
Plain City.
Uh-huh. So he's, like he said, he's still gotta do a development agreement with us, so that we get down to the end of the weed zone this. And once we do this and they agree with it in Plain City, then, uh, we're gonna approve it and they're gonna annex it.
Right.
That's their intention, which we, which I'm happy about, and I assume you are too.
Uh, my whole deal is that to do is going into Plain City.
I know, Ed. And uh they.
My position hasn't changed from the very beginning.
Change. Uh, they have committed to do that, annex.
They want us to go first before they.
Yeah, they want us to do the public hearing. Take the arrows a little.
Well, my only concern is this, I'm not comfortable with the planning commission. If this is what we're gonna go with, I want the planning commission to sign off on that. You know, or I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay, and that's.
You know, I. I'm not gonna have planning commissioners among the public say, hey, this is what was presented, this is what you gave them. So we gotta get that cleared up. Whatever law, whatever time that takes, this has gotta be cleared up before I'm a yes vote.
Okay.
There you go.
So, just so you know.
I, and I think um, I think before we go back to planning commission, maybe we would just roll with what Gage's recommendation is here on this one.
Yep.
And just use this, if we can figure out a way um to make it all work.
Perfect.
The only difference between these two is, is, is really one, one thing, we just have the ability to continue this product that we have up north, right, right down.
Yeah, no, I.
That's the only revision really between these two maps.
And, and I don't see that they're gonna have a problem, but my problem is they haven't signed off on this.
Right.
Well, and for the late person, there's a lot of different ours, all the ones that are on the other.
Yeah, yeah.
So you know what I mean? I mean, the seven. When you say it's all basically the same, it's really not.
Well, the seven twenty-five is solid, but where you put those seventy twenty-five is substantially different.
Right. So Brian, in this whole thing, there was one more road going north-south. You talked to John about that and said that was in their master plan, but not in your plan.
One more road going north and south.
Right. It's, it's in the dots right there, it's that road.
It doesn't go there, doesn't connect there.
Yeah, that's exactly right, Jim. So, so one of the, one of the recommendations that Charlie made on, on the plan was. Yeah, if, one of the recommendations that Charlie made was this right here, was to kind of bring this further north.
That's it, right there, Jim.
Oh yeah, sure do, thank you.
So one of the, the only, the only challenge that I don't know, Charlie, if it was fully um clear.
Boy.
But this road right here dead ends into a park that we're building right now for West Park that was already approved. So the only road, th- this would, again, this would dead end at our property boundary and not continue further north. And so our, our recommendation was that this road kind of become the major north-south road. And John, as we got out, if you remember, Commissioner Jenkins, cause we also talked right down here about I H C owning some property.
You had to get it worked around that.
And we've got it, yeah, we've got to work, we kind of weave that around. So because this twenty-eight fifty goes north-south, it goes all the way down to nineteen hundred north.
And I realize you're working on that.
Yeah, I, I guess.
Brian, can I say anything?
Yeah.
The other thing, uh, when we got in Plain City, we had our West Park plan approved. They knew that this alignment, this main alignment was going to be done. The, the second one, even though it's not exact, is really coming up through, the way it's planned is coming up through our Diamond E project right here. And it's coming up and will come and connect right into here and go up into North Plain City Road. So you're getting, you're getting two. It's just not exactly, because in their general plan, here, but, but we don't know if this uh Rocky Mountain Power owns the land. We can't stick it.
Well, look, we're okay with all this. We just want you sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all right. So we understand before we prove, that's what Gage is.
Yeah.
I agree with that. So, so if you're looking right here, you can see both of those roads that go to the north. In fact, they're gonna have more than that. They're gonna have one, two, uh, let's see, one, two, three roads going to the north.
Well, this one that we were just talking about, this one's gonna come up through Diamond E.
Mm-hmm.
And then go all the way up.
So, so they'll have four roads going to the north that could potentially connect to Plain City Road.
Right.
And I have already discussed, had a discussion with the guy who owns the property right here. And he's anxious to see that road connecting to his property, so he can, he owns all the way to Plain City Road.
Well, I'm sure he does.
He's uh, happy to see that.
Happy day, Charlie. You've done a good job here.
Good. Well, I mean, honestly, it was really well planned out in the first place. It was just maybe a little bit more density than the community was comfortable with, so.
So you know, in this whole thing.
Answer when we're gonna put it on the agenda, yet you don't have.
Yeah, no, uh, and I'll continue to work with the applicants.
First year, we'll have them to get all this stuff done.
I agree.
But you know.
Yeah.
There's one thing that was said here that has been driven home to me, and that is uh, these smaller communities don't have the professional staff to do so much of this. And so what does? They hire theirs, and so every time there's a change, they have to contact them and then they have to go back to the office. Then they, you know, where we're doing it in-house and with the cities, it's so much harder to do. Then when you get to Harris or to Far West, uh, they didn't even have the proper zoning to do any of this. So they were just dead right off the bat. They were dead. And so it becomes a little hard for some of these communities. And uh, uh, Rich Hire, he wants us to have a big WACO meeting on density. Well, this is one of the conversations that needs to take place is the fact that one of the things that holds this up at their level, the cities, is they don't even have the, the zoning for it. Uh, they need to get some zone so somebody can come along and buy it and know that in this zone they can work for something. Where uh, in most of these cities out west, there's no zone to do any of this.
You're exactly right.
Yeah.
Well, they went the opposite because our West Park zone was under a planned residential unit zone.
The R U D.
And they, they delayed us and then they went in and asked.
I heard that.
They, they took it away, so they're trying to go the opposite.
This, oh, this is what's happening.
Plain City. Plain City took it away.
Cut your knees out from underneath you.
Well, yeah, they did.
Can you believe that?
You gotta watch these people from Plain City.
All right, anything else?
I, I, the only other thing, Commissioner Jenkins, if you were in the planning commission meeting, we had one no vote that before he said, I'm gonna vote no. He looked at this plan and said, I don't get it. I don't get why the cities wouldn't be excited. I wouldn't, I don't get why the cities wouldn't be excited about a development like this. It's got great development, it's got great open spaces, it's got great amenities, it's got trails that people like. He's like, I don't. Greg Bell said.
And he went on and on about how great it was.
It was a no vote.
I've said that too. This is a wonderful, this is a fantastic plan. I raised my hand and I even stood up in the back and they, they wouldn't call on me. But they kept saying, well, the county's not gonna be able to do this, the county's not gonna be do, able to do that. And I felt like, Tim, I'm here. And I can tell you, we are willing to do these things. But I never got called on, so anyway, that's just the way it was.
Well, there you go.
That's right. All right, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
We're, we're, we're on the agenda for Central Weaver Sewer District coming up this month.
Right, are you?
Yeah.
So, I'll bring the box and go.
We'll be ready.
You better take care of Lee out there.
Boy, I tell you, he's on the warpath, Gage.
Okay, so can I give you update there? Do you care?
I know, go ahead.
Care if you have an update? So I called up, I called. That's fine.
Okay.
I, I, I called, I called, I called Boyd. I didn't talk to Lee, I called Boyd, and he just essentially said, look, the mayor's just upset that he, he's, he's got two things to protect. He's like, you, you move forward with your plan, you do what you gotta do on your plan, but he's got two things to protect. Well, really, it's just one. It's his sewer capacity.
Yeah.
So he's like, ah, he's just protecting that. I don't know that he's necessarily against your plan, but he just wants to protect.
But according to what you say, it's not an issue.
Not close. Anyway, that's the way it is.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, I've been to two meetings now where he's just exploded over this.
Yeah.
Yeah. You think the Central Weaver people could explain that to him?
They've done it. They just, he doesn't care.
Oh, really?
Now he wants to do a study on it, but he wants his study to go on for a long time.
Yeah. Indefinitely.
Indefinitely. And the results will never be correct unless they agree with him.
Yeah. Thanks.
So much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it, John.
All right, commissioners, our next item on the agenda is Mark Johnson and Mike Caldwell about Weaver parking. You know, about.
Oh, yeah, we know about that.
Sean, have you had any discussions in the last month or so with him?
No.
Ah, speak of the devil.
There they are.
How we doing there, Mr. Mark?
I'm good. Halloween candy?
Halloween candy, yeah, yeah. You haven't, you haven't done your share.
I can't do candy. I'm a diabetic, I stay away from that.
Oh, how are you?
Good.
Probably a good thing.
Mike, how you doing?
Good, how you guys?
Good.
Mike, good to see you.
Yeah, one welcome to.
All right, if you wanna chicken nugget, have one.
Grab a nugget.
You good? Thank you, we appreciate that.
Well, how you guys doing?
We're doing.
How you doing?
We need to get those cones off the road.
November.
You know, these people, it's construction. I love it. I, I read one that says, ah, it's construction. I told old Sue, what's her name, Sue?
Wilkinson?
Wilkinson. Ah, she started complaining. Isn't it wonderful the state's spending a little money up here? Yeah, I'd be grateful because it's gonna turn into nice gray.
Johnny Link was grabbing me and said, I have never been there. All these orange barrels, that's infrastructure, that's investment, that'll pay out at the end of it, and that is amazing. I've never seen more going on. I know people are pissed and you're hearing from it, but that's my view on it.
You know what? I asked him, I says, how are you? You're mad because the state's spending money up here? I'm just letting you know, I'm after them to spend even more. I hope we're successful.
Somebody told me the bi-duct was back open.
It is.
It did.
Oh, really?
Crossed it.
Oh, that music is here.
I saw it today.
Are they finished or they just opened it back?
It looks, it looks.
You know, I think it's done. They put a new surface on that, some kind of a new service. It really looks nice.
Yeah. Well, they got into it and found out it was worse than they thought it was gonna be.
I didn't understand how, why the fixes, they cut out big chunks of concrete and I, I didn't know what they were doing.
Well, they, it's cracked.
They, they found.
Yeah, good.
So they put that back and then they put a new, some kind of new surface on it.
It almost looks like a thin layer of concrete, but I don't know what it is.
It's something else, Gage, but it's not asphalt.
No, it's not asphalt. Just hopefully they're gonna have to take it out and do the whole thing again when they drop it a little.
You know, the, the states go through that.
I'm sorry, what?
The states go through that ARPA funding.
Yeah.
And uh, Andy got uh one point nine million for that project on ninth wall.
Good for her.
So that's gonna go ahead.
So have you guys approved that?
I don't know, but just don't tell Tom, he.
Yeah.
He strokes out.
Well, in concept, they have, but that's about it. I mean, I think she's got a.
I just don't wanna go buy that piece of property and use, really did the state's money and then find out Ogden City's not on board with it.
Let us have a, a look at it. I haven't seen it.
Well, I'll, I'll have Andy, who should I have Andy get with?
Me.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll do, I'll, we'll bring it up tomorrow in our, with our.
We need, we need to have a definite because.
Yeah, cause that's going now. So we can give her four or five hundred thousand, whatever.
Yeah, she's, she's, it's a, it's a twelve million dollar project.
Nine down there, so she's half funded.
I mean, it's gonna clean up that whole set. I mean, you've got a pile of garbage right down there, right off the wall there, so it'd be good to clean up.
Well, like Mark said, we'll bring it up in department director.
We're ready to go, but I'm, I'm glad that I let her pull the trigger on it until.
Okay. You want her to come over and actually make a face-to-face deal, Mark? She probably oughta, Angie.
Let me, let me see where we are tomorrow and then I'll, and then.
Plans? Oh, nothing yet, I don't think.
Well, have her contact Mark. The concept's forty units. Load of moderate income. I don't think, she was gonna put some commercial there, but I'm not sure that's still on the plan.
I know.
Or I shouldn't say commercials.
If, if um, the voucher ones, we're having a fair amount of problems in other parts of the city with, or the voucher. Like we have those on twenty-fifth and Monroe.
Yeah, in fact, she came back to me and had, the vouchers had been cut back a little by the city, seemed like. I think, I think.
I don't know that we cut them back, but we've had a lot of problem in that building with, and when we go to the owner of the building, they say, well, it's the voucher people that are coming from Weaver Housing.
Which building?
It's, it's on the corner of, of twenty-fifth.
Southwest.
It's the northeast corner of the, of that block, and it's, I can't remember what they're called, McGregor, is it called McGregor?
Twenty-fifth and what?
Twenty-fifth and Monroe.
Oh, I think it's in the Gregor, northeast corner.
Northeast corner. And, and um, but, but what I'm hearing is, is that most, most of the problems are coming from the voucher people she's putting in there. So I don't, that, that doesn't help me sell at the city when we have those issues. And she doesn't have any way of knowing when someone, when someone's name comes upon the list, I get it. And I try and tell her people.
Yeah, they get the.
She doesn't have control of, once her name comes up on them, they get about.
Somewhere.
Well, if they're not compliant, boot their backs out.
Yeah.
They gotta comply. We understand that.
Absolutely. We asked you to come over today to talk about the Weaver, uh Weaver Center and Parking. So Scott, Gage, who wants to lead up?
That's this building, right?
This building. Sean, do you wanna lead out?
Sean, Sean's got the details.
Do I need a tissue? Am I gonna cry?
You might, I might, I might.
He's been working on this presentation, his emotions.
I wanna see real tears.
Talking about.
Not the fake stuff.
Not the fake stuff. Oh, good. All right. So as, as you know, we have an agreement with Ogden City that gives us a certain amount of time to have some parking replacement back based on the demolition of our parking structure last year.
Yeah, was it like five years?
It was five years from, I think, when we started that project. So we're, we're now at about three and a half years. And based on, I guess the conversation centers around what we end up doing with the Weaver Center. It's commissioners, and if I say something out of turn, please tell me, but.
Won't be too late by then.
Well, yeah. Based on what I have been hearing from commissioners, uh, it's, it's looking more and more likely that we will be staying here, rather than going somewhere else and building.
That's not bad.
Hold on, but it's not for certain because this is part of this conversation right now.
What, what I'm saying, it's looking more likely. That, that tells us. Yeah, I, I was correct.
But the level of interest here.
Is high.
Hasn't been as what we thought.
Yeah.
Not well, not that would beat our terms.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you have some tough criteria, like you have to let us stay here for, till we get something.
Well, we gotta have a place to go.
The interest is if they want us to stay here forever. And so the deal killer is, you know, we wanna be out of here. If we're gonna do this, we wanna be out of here in four to five years.
Otherwise, we want to own our own.
Or why would, why would we pay rent? So that's the issue.
Right. So with that being said, we want to explore some potential alternatives with the city, whether that is an extension of this agreement, or if it's some kind of creative parking solution, or if we can look at the number of parking spaces required based on what is actually going on at the Weaver Center versus just calling it general office space.
What do you have now?
Uh, right now, we have about a hundred in, in our lower east and between the health department and uh, the general parking in the upper east lot, we've got two, well, actually I can tell you.
Do you know what you had before?
We had about two hundred and fifty in the parking garage. I'll tell you right now what we had. So we have, in that upper east lot, well, in the, in the old parking garage, we had two hundred and forty-two, so about two hundred and fifty. In that upper east lot total, we have two hundred and four. And we have a hundred in the, the new lot.
But in the parking structure, you had two forty, whatever.
Two forty-two.
But you also had the ones that are up above.
We had two hundred and four up top as well.
So that, but that included the health department.
That includes the health department.
Yeah, so I mean, if you're gonna include them on one, you have to include it on the other.
Right.
Correct.
So we've lost a hundred and forty-two.
Essentially, yeah.
Basically.
Well, we weren't, and are you renting across the street?
We, we aren't renting, we have an agreement with Cash Valley Bank that we can use that parking until they need it.
Till they do something.
Right.
But nobody's really used it. And what we're finding is we have plenty of capacity. Uh, the bottom lot is full all the time. On the upper lot, uh, you can always find a spot. You might have to go midway back, but you can always find a spot, is that right?
That's right, unless, unless there's some big event happening and we have people from outside coming in.
Property taxes, the chamber does a big event or something like that.
But we try to always leave the whole front row for customers.
As much, they stay back over there.
Even with property taxes and voting going on, we really haven't had much of a problem with parking.
No.
Because we keep for public, yeah, we keep that first row of the public right there. You guys always walk over, if you were to drive, you'd have a space out there. We, it's held out pretty good.
We walked over just in case.
That's what I mean, no, but you, you guys always walk over, but there's always spaces for the public.
I get twice as many steps in as he does walking over.
Shuffle a little more.
Kind of run to keep up once in a while. Um, so what, so you're, what you're saying is, we either need a different strategy or we need an extension. What do you, what kind of extension are you thinking on the current?
It, I don't know yet because that depends on still what happens with Weaver Center and then where we're at.
Yeah, but we don't want an extension. We want a different strategy.
Yeah, I, I don't think an extension, if we're gonna stay here, I wanna know for sure. I don't wanna put commissioners come in after a situation, they're looking at a twenty million or thirty million dollar parking terrace. I wanna, basically, we've gotta know, if we're gonna stay here, do we have to do a parking terrace or not? That's, that's the question.
And that really decides whether or not we stay here.
And that's, you know, if we had to do a parking terrace, then that's a big incentive to move somewhere else. Because that's a, right now, it's about a twenty million dollar round number. So I'm opposed to put twenty million into a parking terrace, but that goes a long way to doing a new building.
Sure.
So, so that's where we're at.
That's true.
So the agreement is with the city, was it through the?
Through the planning.
Planning commission, so that, so this was a, was this like a conditional use?
Yeah, yes.
So we, we don't have the authority to tell the planning commission year and day, but what we could do is go back and talk with Greg and say, you know, this is something you guys could talk about in the work session to see where the planning commission is.
Right.
And I would be totally open to doing that. Um, part of the thing we're dealing with downtown right now is we've got a parking study going on. Because I just got a report, I think it was last week, that in, in around our downtown core, we have under construction now, or will have in the next year, three thousand additional residential units coming down.
Three thousand?
Three thousand.
Wow. Even aside from what, you just build eighteen hundred of them.
Yep.
Either under construction now or coming online in the next year. We have three thousand additional units. So part of that parking structure is how do we move some of that around? So the timing for this conversation, I think, is good. Um, but we wanna make sure this is one of those, I get lapped at for saying this all the time, but you wanna measure twice and cut once.
No. And if the city wants to come in and pay seventy-five percent of that parking terrace, then that helps our decision a lot easier.
Well, there's, there's, there's a lot of parking decisions that have to be made, and depending on which way we go. Paid parking might be returning, and if it returns, what happens to your lot? You know, if, if they have to pay to park at the junction. I mean, they're gonna come try and sneak into your parking, and I mean, it becomes, it then becomes an overall philosophy about parking.
I.
And with all the traffic from Catalyst and.
No, I don't disagree with that.
Across the street with the, in Cash Valley Building, i- there's some, there's some things we.
It needs to be addressed. You know, really, the fundamental issue we have is, you know, we need more space here. We're acquiring some more space from Woodbury for leasing. So I think if you look at your code, they probably put us under general commercial. Ie, you know, Merrill Lynch type office. And so I think government has a different requirement, if I'm not wrong, as far as parking. If we stay here, I don't think it's too hard to say that in ten years, this will probably be almost a hundred percent county.
Well, when you say this, this building, no, I suspect this will, if we stay here, we're gonna end up buying it, this building the next year.
But I've said, yeah, well.
And it'll be a hundred percent county in, in a year.
Well, ownership.
Not just ownership, I think almost use.
Well, we still got the leases to deal with.
We do, but as they come up, I suspect we'll keep off.
So whatever that is. Three to five years, whenever the lease is expired.
The parking issue you have too is also a parking issue down the spine of this block. So every one of these businesses that's all along this side, east side of Washington, has the very same problem. And developing those cars are gonna be based on what we can figure out. And so there might be a joint solution that makes sense.
We, it sounds, as soon as we put the fence up, we had a lot more available stalls. They were, I know that they were coming over here, not watching, walking back over there.
How do you know you put a fence on?
Yeah.
You build fences, huh?
On the north of Catalyst and Weaver State Downtown.
We were a little surprised. I didn't necessarily want a fence there. I thought it made it nice to be open. But, uh, they ended up doing it and there's a fair amount of people that walked through.
Or, they're, they're probably pumping parking in the junction right now.
Well, I think some of them park in our upper lot and go down.
Well, it's an interesting conversation, and I'm more than happy to go back. I think the first step is to go talk to the planning department.
Yeah.
If you can shoot me something, uh, even official in an email or something, then I'll, I'll see what steps I need to go through and I'll be back.
Okay.
I, I think, weren't anything, we just need a definitive answer.
Okay.
I mean, if, and if the parking terrace is what it is, then we just deal with that from our side. But I don't wanna say, hey, the parking terrace is off the table, and then two years, we're back on with the parking terrace when you guys decide to go paid parking. Let's, let's just make that decision now.
Yeah, we, we need to make some decisions, because we, we're in a place where we, we need to do something, one thing or another.
And if we are forced into a parking terrace, we'll never build the same one we had last time. That was a piece of crap. You lost thirty percent. Number one, it was so small, you lost thirty percent of your capacity going up.
It was.
Wasn't that the old Wolf's Conplex or ZCMI or something else? It's like a forty or fifty year old thing that you guys adopted.
It was. We, we would, uh, build till you pulled in the upper lot and then just pulled right on to like a part of the upper lot.
Yeah, you could, yeah, we wouldn't have ramps.
Let us go work on some options for you. We don't have any problem doing that. Like I said, I think it's important, as we're looking at this broader downtown parking project to.
Well, you know.
Measure twice and cut once and, and.
No, if, if that becomes the overall plan for downtown Ogden, that, hey, this is the best because paid parking, you know, like, I think we understand that.
Okay. The, the, there's an, you, uh, the, the county being in the mix of the, the downtown is important also. And we're not, it's, that's not lost on us. The importance of having you here when we're, we're, we're kind of the county seat or whatever, and I think it's important to have you guys.
Well, and that's, that, that's just the thing. We wanna do something. If we, if, if we could move ahead without that commitment to a parking structure, you'd see us put some money into, uh, the big facelift here. You know, nice, and it'd be a really a nice, uh, change in quite a.
Probably need one of those myself.
We could all use.
You know, we, we looked really hard at several other locations, which were good. We could've moved easily. But when it come right down to the dollars, the expense of moving is just so high. You know, what, it wasn't like it was this much difference.
Yeah.
You know, it was this much difference. It's just so high, uh, and it's getting more expensive all the time.
Yeah.
So it just ends up shooting us in the soul.
Yeah, we get a, we get a, a in-depth study on where to move and how to move and all that. We ranked everything and.
That, uh, Stone Hill Project where the D school was, we started selling those homes at two twenty and thought that was affordable housing. One just listed, I think, last week for five eighty-five.
What?
What?
I heard that.
Five eighty-five.
Not by us.
Three years.
A resale.
Three thousand, a resale, but they, it hasn't sold yet.
Eighty-five.
At the old D elementary site.
Twenty.
Just about three, three and a half years ago. So your point about real estate being really unique down here and construction and everything else is, that is, that's something.
Blows me away.
There you find, that's probably what, a two thousand square foot or less?
I bet it's two, less than two thousand.
Yeah, I think they are.
Eighteen hundred.
I think eighteen hundred.
That's amazing.
Isn't that crazy? In the east central area.
Yeah.
We started those, uh, townhomes down by Slackwater and Bingham's and everything else. The, the comparables, you, you did your market studies and everything else, were about fifty-five bucks a square foot, and we're trying to sell them for a hundred and ten. So we had to finance them all personally through the city to get the first three or four sold, and then the commercial lenders would come in. At about ten, a square foot and new construction and everything. We just had none. No new construction at all for two or three decades. And so to watch that, what is that, fifteen units? Well, like it has.
Years.
Like, unbelievable.
So what's happening on the north side of Bingham's there? I see they're excavating something in there now, that field.
I thought they were building for you guys, but.
Well, apparently not.
No.
No, they're, they're, they're using it for two things right now. Once, all the construction and materials for the townhomes that are going in, that when we express and all of that. And then, uh, Mountain American Credit Union's gonna put all the major offices down there. So we just moved that big yes go sign, bought Hampton's cleaners, relocated that, because you have the. You can't.
Oh, you're gonna relocate or take, tear that building down too?
Yeah.
So the site will stay there, but Mountain American Credit Union's.
Well, I understand Roy's park, or Roy's Cars across the street is sold.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, did it?
He got out of the business.
Roy Mendoza.
The, the river, where the River Inn was, um, someone's gonna come in and build, uh, units in, in that property.
Do you guys own that, or is Mike still?
No, Mike doesn't own that either. Uh, can't remember who bought it out of the.
Wow.
He's, he's kinda Michael.
He, he doesn't own anything in our city anymore.
He sold the motel or the, the stream too.
Yep. Somebody else is working on that.
Had anybody said, when we were just doing pick and shovel work to put any of these things in, and get, get it to stand up? And say, you'd be here in X number of years. It's, it's crazy. And, you know, that's a big credit to Northrup and, uh, a lot of the employment clusters that have come in. There's way more expendable income, way more demand.
I'm just amazed. These guys have come in, they picked every vacant lot that they could find, uh, that will, uh, support this stuff. And they build them all, and they're filling up like that. Uh, you don't see any of them sitting around with for sales on.
How you, how you.
Thousand units.
Either under construction or will be in the next.
Wow, that's amazing.
How you doing with that, negotiating with the UP and getting that project started or done?
The UP, as far as the property underneath the Union Station.
And around, yeah.
We're, um, the attorneys are bantering back the agreement. We've settled on a price. We have, I think, the financing put in place. We've just gotta get the contractual things done. And when you send something to them and you redline it, um, it's two months for it to go through there, all their attorneys. They must have building just of attorneys.
Right.
Sure.
I always joke that UP is like, uh, the end scene in Indiana Jones, when they push the Ark of the Covenant into the military warehouse. This goes on forever, and you know it'll never be found. That's the only thing you can say.
They have seven, seven layers of hell no guys before you even can talk to somebody. It's, it's incredible, but but I think we're getting closer to putting that together. They, um, they were a pain in the butt when it came to um, the interchange. They won't move their track, and they won't cooperate. And so UDOT is actually.
Is that UP or Utah?
It's UP, and well, UP more than it was Utah. The, but the, you, UDOT's actually redesigning the interchange now. They're gonna have to do a new environmental, so it's pushed back.
For phase two.
Off of twenty-fourth Street you're talking?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a, that's an important one. That, that's, that's a popular way to come into the city.
So if they're not gonna move the rail line, are we gonna have to expand north and take out the halfway house?
No, you can't, we can't, we can't, we can't go that direction unfortunately. But, but they're gonna, you'll have one of those where you'll get on, you drive that great big circle to get on the freeway. They don't like to do those anymore, but that's what they're gonna have to do.
You get, you're not be able to take the tracks out.
Can't take, can't move the tracks. They were gonna move them, not take them out. They wouldn't like, they wouldn't even say yes to that, so. So UDOT's a little frustrated, but, you know.
Wow. Cause I liked the concept of taking the tracks out. You had two ways into there, and the, uh, the grain mills had a back entrance. They could use that. There was no problem with that.
Even if they'd moved the tracks, that would've been great, you know. And that's all, I think they were asking to do, and they just said no.
That's an exciting thing, especially with that new Banburger connection out the hill or Northrup, or whatever you call it.
So we'll be getting the full interchange. It's just gonna take a little longer to get there.
It'll be interesting to see how the finances work too. And we're still a couple of years out, and when they funded that two or three years ago, construction, concrete, steel, everything else is a whole different environment, so.
That's true.
Different price structure.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Anything you have for us?
Probably, but it looks like we're in an open meeting, so probably they'll choose a different one.
Fine.
To talk.
We like that.
About homeless issues.
Love to talk about that. Want us to do something?
And Sarah pushed out, uh, some potential dates to talk, uh, longer term recreation for your fields and how we need to work better together. I just wanna keep that on the radar.
We have that.
So Commissioner Harvey brought up to us the other day, the fact that, uh, with all the demand now out at the fairgrounds, you know, do we still wanna play soccer? Do we still wanna, and then we stopped. You know, we've had other cities that are starting to pick some sports up and get rid of other sports. And we thought, you know, we oughta sit around and have some kind of discussion on long-term sports, of who's doing what.
One of the things that came up was this triple crown of softball or baseball, softball or baseball?
Softball.
And, uh, Park City just canceled the contract, and that used to be five thousand visitors for six weeks. I mean, it was a big driver for them up there in Park.
Oh, the triple crown of softball or baseball? Yeah, you're, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
We're looking at, I think, forty fields.
Yeah.
In Weaver County.
Uh-huh.
And so there's some conversations really ought to be happened.
Yeah, well, I have that.
I think that's really.
We talked a couple of years ago about doing a rec, master plan together as a county, remember? The, the, most of the mayors freaked out about that, and so we didn't do it, and.
Still a good idea.
I still think it's the right thing to do.
It is the right thing.
Well, what's happening is the, the pressure's being pushed down to the cities, and so we're talking about getting out of some sports. Uh, we don't wanna get out of something before we talk about the impact.
Sure, yeah, I agree.
Well, I think it helps when you look at, uh, return on investment for ramp money and everything else. Instead of everybody just kinda competing for their slice of the pie, it helps us build an ecosystem that can, can do good things, and we can all kinda share in some benefits and.
You know, when you go down to St. George and you watch what they bring on the softball tournament, it's off the chart. When they're playing till midnight, two in the morning, and, uh, you're looking at that thing, are you kidding me? Their hotels are full.
Yep.
All of them down the Dixie Boulevard.
And if places like Park City and others are starting to hunt some of that, that's an opportunity for us to come in and do something to gain.
Agreed.
Yeah, my grandson's going to the state band competition down at Dixie.
Really?
They're staying in Cedar City.
Oh, really?
No hotels available.
Yeah, I believe it.
For the state band concert or, uh, competition, there's not a hotel in Dix, in St. George. That's amazing, Mark.
And, and, and they said Hurricane, all the hotels are full in Hurricane. I mean, people are having to find hotels anywhere. I thought, okay, that makes my decision. I'm not gonna go down and see him in the state band.
All right, Dave, Airbnb, there you go. The poor place is up right now.
I tell you, it's not a bad idea.
Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah, blew me away when I heard that.
Well, it's nice now too that Airbnb and VRBOs are starting to collect transient room tax. That was just a black hole for a long time.
Was.
Now, they've realized that, look, if we're gonna be welcomed in these communities, we've gotta make our contributions back and track that and, and have a relationship with those communities that are gonna shut down.
Yeah, I agree. This is good. Well, I'm excited to have that, uh, discussion. Commissioner Harv's all over that.
Yeah.
Good way to have it.
You know, think, I think it'd be, uh. Hey, I just wanted to keep that on.
Thanks.
Right in front of everyone's mind. I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
So that was a baseball tournament, huh?
Baseball tournament, yeah.
Big one. It comes next year or the year after, twenty-two, twenty-three?
Uh, I think they have one year remaining in San Diego. Part of their decision was gonna be whether San Diego opened for competition and public gatherings or not, and they opened it. So they think they have one more year to fulfill on the contract, but they really didn't wanna come to Weaver County.
Mm-hmm, wow.
Wanna shake it up a little bit. And it's, you know, all of us have drove kids to competitions all over the place. It's nice to refresh. New location sometimes. You get to go see some new things. They, you go ride the gondola at Snow Basin, go drive around the dam, go fish or do something else. And, and Park City, I, I don't blame them for event fatigue. I mean, if you drive through Park City anytime in the summer, it's just so crowded now. I mean, I think they have forty-four thousand pillows in Park City, and they have seven thousand residents. So people are just like, we're just getting run over by all of this.
Wow, true. Forty-four thousand is seven.
Yep.
Wow.
And they couldn't count any of those in the census.
A lot of the people who were, a lot of the people who service those rooms, though, don't live up there.
Nope.
True.
They can't, they can't afford it.
Or the restaurants or anything else to support that kind of a dessert economy.
Well, and then the closest bedroom over in Heber City, and there, they're getting filled up.
Well, they're getting expensive.
In fact, on that main road, I was up there three, four weeks ago, that main road, driving through the highway forty going up. It's twice as bad as Washington Boulevard. I can't believe how much traffic's on that road in the middle of the day.
Twice as bad with construction on Washington Mall?
Well, okay, good point. So I'm just telling you, the amount of traffic, every turn of the light, it's not ten or fifteen cars, it's thirty and forty cars.
Seven.
Uh, it's just amazing to me, the amount of traffic on that now.
I think I told y'all this, um, being ski people, my brothers, two of them are ER docs, one's a CPA, so like, can kinda work creative schedules. They left on a Thursday before COVID.
Yeah.
At seven AM, and we're buckling ski boots at Snowbird, which is like forty-one miles from Catesville. Five hours later, at noon, took them five hours to go forty-one miles along the Wasatch Front to go from Catesville.
It's amazing, cause it's crap up there.
They could've gone to Snow Basin much quicker.
Well, they, they've been back since, and, and that's a big issue in Salt Lake County right now, those Cottonwood Canyons. Cause there's not a parking place to be had up there. They're gonna start charging twenty-five bucks a day.
Parking.
Cottonwood Canyon.
To go up the canyon?
Out, uh.
Toll Road?
Park, to park.
UDOT's looking at the tow, uh, facility there, kinda like they do with all the toll roads in California, where they have LPRs.
Yeah.
And then you just get charged.
Huh.
So they don't have to have somebody stop and charge you. They just have a license plate reader that will.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a mess there. That's why they all come up to Snow Basin.
Yeah.
Well, and Snow Basin now, you know, they're getting ready to put the first big hotel up there.
Two new parking lots.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're going. They've been in there on a regular basis, meet with us. So here we go.
Yeah. Hey, thanks for coming over to meet with us.
I drove up through there, went for some, uh, right over to weekend. Drove through just Morgan to have a look at some of those places and the roads that have been cut. And the clearing that's been going on for the Wasatch Peaks, that's gonna be a whole different.
Are any of those roads asphalted yet?
Not yet, I don't believe.
Oh, so they're all dirt?
The HO, the HOA, the HOA fee, north of fifty a year.
So Randy Watt went to one of the planning commission meetings in Morgan. And everybody was all pissed off and everything else, and he said, do you have any idea how municipal government works? These are all. These are all second homes. They'll be paying one hundred percent of the property tax. It's all gonna be private security, private fire, private everything else. You're not gonna educate their kids. You're not gonna pick up their garbage. You're not gonna do anything. This is the biggest windfall for you ever. And then uh the group, the development group said that uh one of the things they did that was one of the best plans ever. All the people in Morgan were like, I don't wanna look over all these rooftops and everything else. They went and bought a whole bunch of balloons. Cause all the development will occur in that valley and they put balloons at every single height of all of the buildings. And brought the planning commission up, drove them around, everything else. And did you see anything special? Anything stand out to you? No, 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 blah, blah, blah. Then they drove down into where their development.
Really?
And those balloons at the height just took everybody off allegedly.
Really?
This has been well thought out and of course, that's not gonna be instruction to.
Yeah.
Morgan and to all of us that live around here because it's.
We hear the lots are starting in about ten million feet. No, but they told us.
Forty acre minimum?
Thirty, was it?
Oh, I don't know.
Hard what they tells you today?
Can't remember that.
Yeah, remember it was uh the guy from Snow Basin told us.
I thought, I think they originally started out about two, but that's been when they first took reservations. I think it's a good ten million bucks.
He told us, but how many did he say they'd take reservations to sell? Was it thirty-three thousand?
Yeah, thirty-seven.
Yeah, thirty-seven. That was uh, what's his? No. Oh, was it John? I thought it was the guy at Snow Basin.
No, it was a.
Manager up there.
Yeah.
Davey Raff.
Davey, I thought it was Davey. Yeah, Davey told us that.
Hi, gentlemen.
That's crazy.
Take care.
Good to see you.
Take care. Pam, Justin will be right with you.
Come back and see us.
Hey, good for you.
Thank you. Hey, right, we're gonna work on that.
Hey, thanks, Mark.
To have you.
Appreciate it. Cold cops, we'll leave.
Get your butt out of here. Don't come back. Yeah, that is a great little lunch. They just gave us chickens. I've never had these. I want one too, we'll play full.
Where'd Harv go?
Restroom, probably. Good, how are you?
Harv, are you doing the tour with us? If we have space. I was planning, that's on my schedule, but whatever we got space for. We got room for it, just up to you. Yeah, I wanna go. Okay. I'm just there for support. Jenkins is.
I gotta go downstairs.
Let's get moving. Let's move ahead if we can. We have uh Pam Kramer and we have uh Justin Hebert. On the line with us and we're gonna talk today, commissioners. Our next item on the agenda, we also have Steve and Rick with us. We're gonna, this is a discussion on the proposed land land acquisition uh for wildfire resources. And wildlife wildlife uh wildlife land specialist Pam Kramer's with us and uh and then Justin Hebert. So which uh which two of you would like to start first?
Uh I'm Justin Aber. I'll start first. I'm sorry.
You say that last name?
It's pronounced Abear.
Abear, of course it is French. I am so sorry. I studied French under Inspector Clouseau for Pink Panther movies.
If you guys don't mind, I'll go ahead and share my uh screen so you guys can see the uh presentation I've got here. Gonna slide ahead there. So to start off, my name's Justin Aber. As you can see, I'm with the Division of Wildlife Resources. I'm a land specialist here with the division. I'm also joined today by Pam Kramer, who's a wildlife biologist out of the Northern Regional Office. Uh we're here today to talk to you about a proposed land acquisition along the Weaver River. Um the location of the acquisition um is just uh between Euenta and Riverdale. Along the I eighty-four corridor, just west of the Adams Avenue Parkway. Uh you can see on the map provided here, um the two parcels illustrated in green uh delineated by the county line. Uh this particular acquisition uh involves two land parcels, one parcel, the larger one in Davis County. And the smaller one in Weber County. County is the one that we'll be uh speaking with you today on.
Justin, Justin, hello, whoa, 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 stop.
Oh, sorry.
Can you share your screen, please, so we can see what your your screen showing is not?
Is it not, is it not showing?
Oh.
Let me uh. Let's see here. I'm not the best with it. How's that?
All right, there we go.
Okay, I apologize for that. Um but yeah, I'll go through this again. Uh the the particular parcels that we're interested in and uh potentially uh acquiring are between uh Euenta and Riverdale. Uh along the I eighty-four corridor, just west of the Adams Avenue Parkway. Uh the two parcels that we're that we're interested in are the two illustrated here in green. And we've got the uh county line delineated there in red. Um the larger parcels you can see is in Davis County, the smaller one is in Weber, and that's what we're here to talk to you today about.
Nate, both of those could affect the trails.
So the, what are you gonna do with them, Justin?
Basically, that what we're about to run into that, but the the intent is to basically. Um acquire them and the the land will be managed exactly as it is currently. It's mainly for angler access to the river as well as to maintain the the trail network, uh specifically the Weaver River Parkway Trail. Uh as we acquire these, um I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself here, but since you asked the question. We're going to basically acquire these properties, but uh the Trails Foundation of Northern Utah. Will retain an easement to to basically have right away access for those trails and to to allow that to be maintained.
Yeah, that's, that's a win-win.
Guys have been down there, they go in there, get on the river and hunt ducks down.
Do they? They shoot along there? Is that legal?
I don't know. You can see, well, not probably. It's in the Washington Terrace City comes down somewhere.
You can see the ranch right here, Harv.
I sure can.
See how that that fell out of the mountain? Yeah, Luvial Fan, that's right.
We good to move on, sir?
Uh why aren't you moving forward?
So those two parcels that we talked about will be integrated in um a project that we internally call the. Uh Weber Pathways Angler Access Area. Uh this is a conglomerate of a number of parcels that are along the along the River River uh that basically. In 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 uh all put together include about forty-two, forty-three acres. Uh that are specifically managed for angular access and public recreational opportunities. Uh specifically the trails uh that was was mentioned earlier.
Another second, Justin. Hold on just another second. Hold right there.
Sure.
You see commissioners, why it's important for us to, on a side note, look at that line. That line's gonna keep changing every twenty years. Let's just follow eighty-four. Good grief.
I agree with that.
I thought we changed that.
We are in the process of step two right now.
Okay.
So I just, I thank you. I just had another point to bring up.
Not a problem. If if you guys need me to pause or or anything like that, just feel free to let me know and I'll 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 hang out where we're at.
I think this is no issue at all.
Yeah.
We wanna help the public access that river.
Go ahead, Justin.
Okay. Uh so our goals of the acquisition, as as mentioned, are to ensure con- continued uh angler access. As well as maintaining that trail network uh for that outdoor and other recreational opportunities. Um as mentioned, uh the 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 way the public will see and use the land, they would not notice any change in access. Uh everything will be managed as it is presently, so there'll be no change in that regard.
Justin, who owns that forty-two acre?
The the green, the green is currently owned and managed by the D W R.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Not a problem.
That's good.
I don't see, I don't have.
I don't see a question with that. We're good with it. You need to keep going.
I was just, this a little more detail showing you a little bit closer in zoom. Um the particular parcel that we're interested in, that's in Weber County. It is privately owned, but it's owned by the nonprofit Trails Foundation Northern Utah. Um and as mentioned, when we acquire this, they're going to maintain uh legal access for that trail network to to persist through that that property. And that's a point one-six acre parcel that we're looking to acquire.
Yeah, no, yeah, we're good.
Alrighty. That's really all we had. If you had any specific questions, uh Pamela, I'd be more than happy to field them.
But.
You have the deed, do us to sign it.
Um I have to email that in. I've got a letter drafted for you guys. Um I believe that, would you like me to just email that to Christie Brigham?
Uh Bingham.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll I'll get that over to her uh just as soon as we conclude here. And uh as mentioned, we'd love to have your support on it. And if we could get that signed, that'd be great. I appreciate it.
There's no problem. You got our support.
Awesome. Well, I appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you. Sorry we couldn't keep you longer on the phone.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
Right, thank you. Take care.
All right, bye-bye.
And next time you join us, you're gonna have to settle down just a little more to your little.
I've I've only, I've only been with the division about three, three and a half weeks now. Uh I just moved to Utah myself, so I've only been here about about four month or four weeks, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, you have.
Yeah, so so uh I apologize for being a little bit nervous, but uh yeah, it's my first rodeo, so thank you.
You did good.
Alrighty, bye-bye.
Hey, that's good. That's gonna be great.
Win-win. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Yeah, and he said so moved.
Second.
Okay, good. That's what I was waiting for.
All in favor?